Thank you Lord.
When you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. When you say I stay, when you move I move, I will follow you. Amen. You were buried in the ground, but the grave was not for you. For you never see the cross. Hallelujah, you have overcome, you have overcome. Hallelujah, you have overcome, you have overcome. Hallelujah, Jesus you have overcome the world.
How many of you are to love the Lord? Amen. Because I'm telling you church, how far you run away from God, he's chasing after you. Your heart is the gift the Lord has given and he wants it back. He wants the heart of you. So as we sing this song, I encourage you to pour out your heart before him.
I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. My heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. You gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. You gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. And my heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. My heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. You gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. My heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. And you gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. And my heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. You gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. And my heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. And you saved your life, and you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. My heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. My heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. You gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. And my heart is beating, my soul is burning. I just wanna be with you. And you gave your life, you saved my life. I just wanna be with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you. I wanna fall in love with you my God. I wanna fall in love with you.
Oh Jesus, we wanna fall in love with you. We wanna fall in love with you. We worship you, we worship you. Oh Shantara, oh Shantara. We wanna fall in love with you. We expect your breakthrough tonight. We expect your power. We expect your harmony. We worship you, we worship you. We proclaim your greatness. And I worship your breakthrough. And I worship your breakthrough. Oh Shantara, oh Shantara. Walking separate as we love God. Walking separate as we love God. We worship you, we worship you. Being so beautiful. Your love is an ending, your love is a change of mind. Oh Jesus, we wanna fall in love with you God. Jesus, we wanna fall in love with you God. We wanna fall in love with you God. We wanna fall in love with you God. Oh Shantara, oh Shantara. Oh Riba, Baba, Se Tere Bebe, Shotor, Baba. Oh Shantara, Baba, Baba. Oh Shantara, Baba, Baba. Oh, we praise you, Jesus. We worship you, Jesus.
Thank you, Lord. I believe some people came here tonight to receive a breakthrough. A breakthrough in some certain areas in their life. So today, as we sing this song, we're gonna proclaim a breakthrough. Now, we want to see a breakthrough. A breakthrough in our house. A breakthrough in our lives. A breakthrough in our spirits. A breakthrough in our soul. Come on and sing and praise the Lord, amen.
You are the undefeated one. My life and my salvation. When do we came, my enemies and my foes. Upon me to eat on my flesh, they stumble and fell. Almighty, defender, my victory, my refuge. The one I run to. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Breakthrough. You are the God of the breakthrough. And when I can't see my way through. And I really don't know what to do. I look to you and pray through. The walls fall down when I shout through. And strongholds break when I pray through. So I'm gonna praise you. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. You are the undefeated one. My life and my salvation. When do we came, my enemies and my foes. Upon me to eat on my flesh, they stumble and fell. Almighty, defender, my victory, my refuge. The one I run to. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. You are the God of the breakthrough. And when I can't see my way through. And I really don't know what to do. I look to you and pray through. The walls fall down when I shout through. And strongholds break when I pray through. So I'm gonna praise you. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough.
Praise you in my heart. Praise you in my mind. Praise you in my spirit. Praise you in my soul. Praise you in my weakness. Praise you in my struggle. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my worship. Praise you in my faith. Praise you when I live. Glorify your name. Praise you when I dance. Praise you when I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my heart. Praise you in my mind. Praise you in my spirit. Praise you in my soul. Praise you in my weakness. Praise you in my struggle. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my worship. Praise you in my praise. Praise you when I live. And glorify your name. Praise you when I dance. Praise you when I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my heart. Praise you in my mind. Praise you in my spirit. Praise you in my soul. Praise you in my weakness. Praise you in my struggle. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my worship. Praise you when I live. Glorify your name. Praise you when I dance. Praise you when I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. Praise you in my worship. Praise you in my praise. Praise you when I live. Glorify your name. Praise you when I dance. Praise you when I shout. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough. You are the God of the breakthrough. And when I can't see my way through. And I really don't know what to do. I look to you and pray through. The walls fall down when I shout through. And strongholds break when I pray through. So I'm gonna praise you. You are the God, you are the God of the breakthrough.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Give your best clap for the Lord. Come on, hallelujah. If you believe that it's a breakthrough. Breakthrough in your heart, breakthrough in your mind. Hallelujah. When the cloud of glory comes down. When these little people, they were walking on the wilderness. When the glory comes down. The people of God, they come to other and make their tent. Until that glory was lifted up, they won't move from that place. They will have the fellowship of God. They will wait upon the Lord, that the Lord God Almighty. Will he not speak? Will he not guide? Will he not guide? Hallelujah. Tonight, I believe that God is so delighted in our midst. God Almighty, he is looking you and me. We might be a little crowd or we might be bigger people. Hallelujah. When God sees your heart. If he sees that you are hunger for him, that. Will he not speak to me? Will he not touch me? Hallelujah. Will he not make a breakthrough in this particular matter? Hallelujah. If your heart is crying in such a way. I believe that my God has come down today. Hallelujah. Oh, my God is here in here. Hallelujah. According to his great promise that he said. Where two or three gathering in his mighty name. The mighty God, he will come down. Hallelujah. He will not just come down, but he will perform. He will show his power. Hallelujah. He will show his anointing. Hallelujah. That his anointing will break every yoke. That his anointing will break every darkness away. Hallelujah. Oh, let us declare that it will be a breakthrough. Breakthrough in your ways. Breakthrough in your path. Breakthrough in your house. Hallelujah. Breakthrough in your workplace. Hallelujah. Come on, open your mouth and declare that. Before the servant of God, you may come. You declare yourself. Let God see your hunger. Let God see your thirst. Let God, hallelujah, see that your passion towards that breakthrough. Hallelujah. Every single. And just talk to God. Hallelujah. In our. Land. Cala ba ba landera. We declare your. Oh my God. In this place. We declare your breakthrough, my God. All my. Come now. Minister God, my Father. Minister God in a. Yellow. Direct over my God, my Father. Oh, bring your fire into the mess, God. Bring your. My God, my Father. That your fire will make. Tonight. In our. Cala ma ma landera. Hallelujah. Give to them. Talk in. Talk in. Hallelujah. Let your divine time. Hallelujah. La ba cala ma ma landera. Aus da la ba ba cala ba lande. Ora ma ma landera. Oh, hallelujah. Let the heavenly realm open for us. Let the heavenly realm open for us. Every darkness will flee away from there. From our parts in the name of Jesus. Come on, hallelujah. Clap your. Rejoice in the presence. La ba. Cala ma ma. Da la ba ba cala ba lande. Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty. We worship you, Daddy. We honor you, God, my Jesus. Breakthrough, breakthrough, God, my Father. Come on, claim that bright breakthrough in Jesus' name. Claim that breakthrough in Jesus' name. Hallelujah, mighty God, my King. We worship you, Daddy. Hallelujah. Thank you, blessed God Almighty. Tonight, let us surrender this meeting into the hands of God. That God Almighty will bless us and lead us. In a greater and a higher level. Let us ask the Lord to bless this meeting. And use the servant of God mightily today. In our midst, hallelujah. Our request brother Thirutarach to lead us in prayer. As he pray, let's join with him. Hallelujah. That's all prayer. Hallelujah. Thank you, loving Father. Hallelujah. You inhabit the presence of your people, Lord God. Thank you, Lord, you are here. Jesus, thank you, Lord, for your precious blood. That has given us the way to come to the presence of God, the Father. To worship boldly, with love. Thank you, Father, for your grace that abounds in this place, Lord God. Wherever the praises of your people exalted is exalted. Your grace abounds, Lord. Their glory is revealed. Thank you, Lord, for your glory in this place. Father, thank you, Lord, for your glory in this place. For your presence in this place, Lord. Even mountains shall melt like wax in your presence, Lord God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Nothing is impossible for you, Lord God. Everything is possible. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Lord, we give you all the glory. The praise you deserve. Hallelujah, we give you all the glory, Lord. Hallelujah, never and forevermore. From generation to generation. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. We sit at now. Hallelujah. Praise God. God is good all the time. Amen, he is a good God. Hallelujah. Blessed be his holy name. Amen. I thank and praise God for each one of you. You made it together today to come forward. To attend this special day. Even though it was very suddenly we decided on Sunday. To have this meeting. And it has been greater blessing in these last few days that. God Almighty is using his servant even. Today, you know, there was. A whole house was echoing with the last Sunday's message. My wife was hearing on the first floor and I was hearing on the ground floor in my mobile. Amen, hallelujah. Because when you stand here and translate, you know, you won't receive exactly. But it was so powerful what God is speaking and ministering to us. Amen. So let us expect tonight that God Almighty, he will bring the fresh manna. Yes, I always say that, you know. We are not here to receive any old manna. Amen. If God can feed this real people with our new manna every day. The same God we are worshiping. The God Almighty, he will outpour his glory tonight. Hallelujah. Amen. Let's put our hands, welcome our dear pastor to come forward. Amen, he is not a new to us. He is a part of this family. Amen. Pastor Ranjit. Amen. Get the mic quick faster. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Yeah. Great happiness, praise the Lord. I am very happy that I've been able to minister you in the last few days. Like pastor said, it is my own household. That I have got a great experience and I experienced so much from this church. That I could feel the instant revelations of the Holy Spirit on this stage. That the power of the Holy Spirit was manifest powerfully. With open heart, I give thanks to the pastor and his family for hosting me. That they welcomed me with an open heart and gave me so many times to minister in this church. That I give you the thanks from my heart. That I gave the connection to this church. No, no, it's wrong. It is the Holy Spirit who gave the connection to this church. Hallelujah. Amen. Few years ago, so many years ago, we met and we have a friendship. That it became a connection like this, I praise the Lord. That I give thanks to the Lord for all the sons and daughters of God here tonight. The messages that I've been preaching here has come into pass. And I am very happy to hear that. Last Sunday, I was ministering to the heavenly feast Malayalam service in the evening. There was a sister there who was here in the morning ministry. She started speaking to me. The Holy Spirit told me that February 2nd on her inbox in her email. There will be a message of deliverance which will come through. It didn't come on the 2nd, it came on the 1st itself. Hallelujah. On the 16th, there will be a breakthrough for her regarding this particular incident. I was very happy to hear that there was so many. The work of the Holy Spirit have manifested here that I could see that. The Lord always says that only what he can do. That if it is not there, the Lord is able to create it. The Holy Spirit is there in our midst. That he will manifest. Remember me in your praise. Whenever I remember, I will pray for you all. Have you brought the. The. Baby dress? Yeah, praise the Lord. Hallelujah. That we released that today, tonight. Okay. For the first. Can you call them please? Brother Sion. Amen. Amen. God said that those, for those who believe, through those who believe, the miracles will happen. There is always actions before. The faith should manifest in actions. Yeah, yeah, okay. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Praise God. God is going to give them generations. What is the date that we set past? November, November. November, November. There will be, November, this will be used. November, beginning of December, right? Yeah, I remember. Everyone stretch out your hands. Towards this couple. When I look at this, I believe that it is the son that they are praying for. Who are going to pray? In the name of Jesus, who has all authority in heavens and on earth. That I come to your mighty presence. Towards them, the God spoke and he is going to give them generations. In obedience to what the Lord said, they brought their baby clothes. That the three of us together, the anointed ones in the Holy Spirit. The church, together with the church. Together, we pray. November, what God is going to give them, the child, they're going to wear this dress. That I anoint this dress for that particular way. Whatever they believed, this is a liberation. That is the anointing orderly thing that is going to come to pass. That the Lord, God has kept it as an act of righteousness. In the name of Jesus. Amen. Give thanks to the Lord because he's already done it. Amen. Everything that the pastor does. Congratulations. Amen. 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 God bless you. Amen. God bless you. Amen. Amen. I will see them as three when I come again. When you come to the presence of the Lord. Ask if there is anything that has not happened in our lives, that will happen. We have come to the presence of the Lord who can do everything. Amen. Let the Lord be with you. I'm going to speak to you tonight. That I wanted to speak to you from the book of Corinthians. I wanted to speak to you about the gifts of the Holy Spirit. Hello? When I think the Lord changed my message. From Book of John. From chapter 20. That there is an anointing of God's speech on that. There will be certain liberation. There will be certain breakthroughs in our midst. That we can think about this particular chapter. From chapter 20, from verse 1 onwards. Can we read? Can you read in English, please? Jesus. 20. Amen. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the presence of mighty. Thank you for your mighty presence in our midst. Let this meeting be a blessing for each and every one of us. The Holy Spirit be touching everybody who is here tonight. There are stones in your life that God has already told. It will happen, it will happen, it will happen, has not happened. Today, it's going to happen. That the power of resurrection be manifest here tonight. Let in the name of Jesus, let it be manifest here tonight. Pray in the name of Jesus, that will start tonight. The power of resurrection, whatever it can do, let it be manifest here tonight. In the name of Jesus tonight. Those have not seen tonight any miracles, let them see in their lives today. Pray that in the name of Jesus, let it happen tonight. In the name of Jesus. Amen. He is the Lord. Gospel is a very blessed gospel. That I'm going to preach in, on the word of God from the Book of John. 20th chapter is a very powerful, you know, happenings in that particular chapter. Before the resurrection of Lord Jesus Christ. That in front of the sepulchre, the miracle that is happening is being written here. That I'm going to speak tonight from this particular verses that I first read. That with prayer and with great trust in the Lord, look unto the word of the Lord. That in the ministry of Jesus, you have to look at them in two particular levels.
Uh, before resurrection and after resurrection.
Before resurrection and after resurrection.
Uh, resurrection. Mom. Resurrection. She. 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 She.
What Jesus said before the resurrection is different from what Jesus said after the resurrection.
We. Are. She. And. The. She. She.
Whatever God declared before the resurrection is not the same as what God declared after the resurrection.
We. Are. She. 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 You. I. Go. Either. The. Before the resurrection, Jesus called two disciples and asked them to go across, across the river into the different land, which he showed. She. 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 Boom. At.
Before, after the resurrection, the Lord said, go to the ends of the world, amen.
Praise the Lord. We. Are. I. Go. I. Do.
Before the resurrection, the Lord is telling, go to the next, you know, nation or next place across the river. But today, after the resurrection, he's saying, go to across the nations, even unto the ends of the world.
And. The. She. She. She.
That meaning of this is that after the resurrection, if you, if you have the revelation of the resurrection, all your bondages will be broken.
Amen.
Amen.
We. Are. She. 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 That everything before, after the revelation of the resurrection, everything that your, your area of boundaries are broken and also your,
your resurrection, the power is manifest, so you can be of, in a different level of ministry.
God. And. I'm. You.
The Lord is speaking to you tonight, uh, in, together.
She. But. I'm. In. The. Is there any boundaries in your life that will be broken tonight? I. Me. I. Think. I'm. She. 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 She.
Though, everybody who is sitting here tonight, he has, has a manifest power of resurrection in them.
Amen.
Amen.
I. She. She. She.
The. Life of resurrection in there, clap their hands and praise the Lord.
Okay, they. The. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
She. She.
Those who believe, say amen.
God. Uh, look. We. Are. She. She.
Before resurrection and after resurrection.
Damascus. In. Damascus. She.
Before Damascus and after Damascus.
Damascus. In. Damascus. In. Mom. Paul. Los. Manic. Who. Are. The.
Before Damascus, you know, Paul used to preach, that time it was sold, in house together, but there was no repentance.
She. Damascus. She. She. I. She. She. After Damascus, whenever he preached, there was many miracles that happened. Amen. God. My. Coo. She. I'm. Not. To.
When, when you have a, an incident of, you know, revelation of Jesus Christ, or knowing Jesus Christ, or he calls you, then you have a totally changed life afterwards.
In. The. She. 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 She.
What the Lord has wanted to speak to you is before the resurrection, subject regarding before the resurrection and after the resurrection.
I. 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 Message. Change. I. Didn't. I. Pro.
If the message has changed, together when I was walking in, then there is a mighty miracle happening, going to happen.
Amen.
Tonight.
I. Did. She. 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 She.
Let all your tiredness go and that be, be encouraged, that mighty miracles are going to happen. Amen.
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 I. Will.
Be a miracle tonight.
I. Can. I.
Those, those who sees me will say, this man or this woman is a miracle.
He. She. She.
Those who have never seen miracle before, who is going to see miracles tonight.
Ning. And. I. I. She. She.
Before, because I came here, I am also going to see a miracle in my life.
Amen.
Amen.
I. She.
There will be a tremendous release of the power of the Holy Spirit.
Amen. I'm. The. She.
That God, Jesus Christ was crucified.
She. She.
That he was buried.
Uh, you. And. You.
There are another, another particular thing about John.
She. 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 She.
There was so many disciples who said when Jesus was going to be crucified.
But.
They will, they will stand with him.
But. I. I.
Said that even if everybody says against you, I will never, you know, disown you.
Amen.
Amen.
Go. She. She. She.
The, the crow croaked twice, but, you know, Peter croaked three times after that, amen.
Amen. Go. She. 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 She.
The rooster actually only did it twice, but Peter did it twice.
But. She. 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 She.
Whenever Peter said that, you know, I'm not going to disown you, Jesus said in his heart, you know, you are the one who is going to disown me.
Amen. I. She. She. She.
There is nothing in the Bible that anybody else said that.
I. She. 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 She.
Thomas would have said that even if everybody else rejects you, I will not reject you.
She. 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 She.
When they heard that Jesus had been resurrected, they said, without seeing, I won't believe.
Amen.
Amen.
She. She. She.
There is another one who is called Judah.
Amen. Offer. Take. Call. You. I. I.
Well, she. Didn't.
Uh, offer. Take. Call.
If he, if he gets an opportunity, he will catch all of the like, to us.
Amen.
Amen.
Three. Pan. The.
If God has this 12 kinds of people who was with him.
Amen.
Amen.
I. Can. Can. Carry anything, but it's difficult to carry man together with you. Hello.
Hello.
We. Could. I'm. But. I'm. I.
That you know about a man who is, you know, pastoring his own household, how difficult it is.
I. Just imagine the real pastor who, who is actually looking after all these households. I. 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 I.
Not everybody can become a pastor, only the, what's Lord Sanointed can become a pastor.
I. I. She. 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 She.
That there should be a special grace of the Lord to do this particular ministry.
Amen.
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 That if your husband is sitting beside you, just give him his hand.
Hmm.
Your hand.
If. You.
The pain that was spared by Jesus on the cross.
That crucial, difficult part of the Lord has said, "This is not a life that we will never see."
And the suffering that Jesus was going through on the cross when he saw, he said that the greatest love is from the cross.
That is why they wrote five books and all of them, you know, speak of love, which is the main theme. You don't have to worry about prayer, you don't have to worry about prayer, you don't have to worry about prayer, you should have love. Amen. When there is love, there will be miracles. When there is love, there is no big nor small. Where there is love, the Lord can actually manifest himself in twenty-four hours, all throughout. Amen.
Twenty-four hours.
This platform is such a church, this church is such a platform. Amen. Jesus.
Jesus.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Give your hands to a person sitting next to you and show all your teeth and say, "Hallelujah." I like it very much.
Amen. Say, "I love you."
Amen. Praise the Lord.
Amen.
Let's pray.
Just raise your hands and say, "Amen."
Amen. Do you want to say it here?
Amen. Only say it here, you know.
Don't go and say it to some other person outside.
Just say a glory, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, Jesus.
At the time of his burial has come forth.
His body was wrapped with linen. I don't know the length of the wrappings that was done. I had that in my mind, but I forgot. That he was rolled, the linen was rolled across his body all throughout. Then they put the dead body into the sepulchre. When I was preaching in my nearby place, in a place called Koranjiri. So many years before. There was a man from a traditional church called Martomite. That after the ministry that he said to me, "I will only leave all the people and come to my bedroom." When I was sitting in his bedroom, he came to me after leaving all his people around. I was looking at my mobile phone when I was sitting in his bedroom. Then he asked me to remove that mobile and sit in front of me face to face. When I sat there before face to face with him, then I understood why he called me into that particular place. That in that particular bedroom, that room, there was a berth or there was a particular area which was raised and on top of that there was a coffin, yes. When I looked at that thoroughly, then I didn't look at him again. Then they asked me, "Are you afraid of the air?" Not because I'm afraid, because nobody actually keeps it in their home. It's only seen in the shops where you buy it. Then I was thinking what is going on and I was looking at his face. I'm only conduct meetings, I have a great, you know, proud heart. When I come to the bedroom, I understand. Then I will pray and then I will sleep. When I look at this till I go to sleep. That this is speaking to me that even if I'm a great person, I'll finally end up in that. That even if I'm from the traditional church, I thank God that he get that particular revelation. Whatever the Lord gives, never be proud in your heart, with a good heart accept it and leave for the Lord.
Amen. Praise the Lord.
Amen. When he put the body of Jesus into the sepulchre and they put a great stone in front of that. That removed all the soldiers from there. In the night, that night. Around twelve midnight. That the all the lamps in all the house in Israel were going to be put out. There was a little bit of light in top of Golgota. The soldiers were playing cards there in the middle, in the top of that particular place called Golgota. Two soldiers were standing, one on the right and one on the left side of the great stone which is covering the sepulchre. Around twelve, twelve thirty, there was some voice coming out of the sepulchre. Amen. There was a discussion going on in the sepulchre. These people who are the soldiers have no fear in their heart. I'll tell you an example from olden times, that somebody said, "I'm a person who has, you know, slept in the graveyard for three and a half years." Everybody was amazed. Oh, he has got great courage to do that. The next sentence is that, "If I sleep in the house, the police will come and catch me, so I slept in the graveyard." I understood that if you have fear of the police, then the fear of the graveyard will be gone. If you really fear God, then there is nothing to fear against. Just raise your hands and praise the Lord. There is a discussion going on in the sepulchre, in the grave. The two soldiers when they're listening to it, whatever was speaking, being spoken in the grave, in the sepulchre, was about bringing out the Lord Jesus Christ. Where there is Jesus, there is a kingdom of God. Where there is Jesus, there are angels with him. Where there is Jesus, the power of manifestation, the kingdom of God is manifest, continues. Because Jesus in the midst, there is power of kingdom of God here tonight. The manifestation of the kingdom of God is that those who are blind can see, those who does not hear can hear, and those who cannot speak can speak, and those who are dead will be raised up. Where there is continuous miracle and look at the church and say, "There is a kingdom of God." Somebody who is going to be dying is brought into this church, then he should able to lift him up and make him walk. There is kingdom of God. There is a revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ. There is a revelation difference between the Old and the New Testament. The Old Testament, who is the greatest person, is the chief priest. His beard itself is a great super thing, you know, he's got a great long beard. That he wears a particular kind of dress. There are pearls, twelve pearls, you know, on his front of this particular dress. There is different kinds of threads. Four types of thread is used, being used to bring that, to weave that particular dress. Once in a year, he enters the most holy place for the, you know, remission of the sins of the people of Israel. He comes like a bride. That the tip of his garment will be on the floor like this. When he comes from, it is a super thing to watch. Whatever perfume is used, from hundred meters, you can smell it. See that he is walking through, you will always be able to clap, you know, such a majestic thing it is. For example, if he's coming through here, you will be clapping and waiting. Have you looked at some people, you know, they will, when they come in, you will look unto them and lift them with their eyes and then bring them into the front? Amen. I'm talking about some people not here. He's being brought with our eyes and we are looking unto him. When it comes just in front of our eyes, we are still clapping. When he's gone there, he will stop clapping. Do you know what it is? Friend is very good in front of him. Then when he's going forward, there is a chain in his leg. That he is saying that because he has no other choice, he is going into the most holy place. I am also afraid. There is no, you know, surety that he can come out from there. There's a chain in his leg and he is going forward into the most holy place. That if he dies there or if something happens there, he will be pulled out of the chain from the most holy place. In the Old Testament, those who walk in will come again crawling out. In the Old Testament. The New Testament is those who go in crawling in will come jumping out. Amen. Ninety percent of the life, somebody comes in here with ninety percent of life lost, hundred percent life will come into him when he comes to the New Testament church. Those who say, those who believe, raise their hands and praise the Lord. I'm not talking about every church, doctor. Some churches, if they come with ninety percent loss of life, they will put him into a, you know, grave, what do you call it? Put him into the coffin. There are New Testament churches which do the charge of the priestly ministry, which is according to the Old Testament. That he is not doing an Old Testament, ironic priesthood that is being manifested in the New Testament. The Jesus ministry was of love. Old Testament ministry was that if you tell them the law, that if you do like this, you will be saved. The New Testament is not about the law, that they are not being given the law, but give them the life and bring them to life. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. The New Testament ministry, it's all about love. I'll come back to this topic again. Those two people are standing on either side of this sepulchre. They were amazed when what was going on inside, what talk was going on inside the sepulchre. There is a comparison between Maria's womb, Mary's womb, and Joseph of Arimatia. There was no need for anybody to fast for Jesus to come out of womb of Mother Mary. Here it's okay, but in my place, when somebody gets pregnant, the prophets get a lot of job in it, prophesy. The prophet has to say whether this is a boy or a girl, that's what they want. I recall that pastor who has no gift of prophecy. This particular sister was pregnant. The husband said that, you know, to the pastor that, "I want to know whether this is a boy or a girl." He didn't know what to say, you know, the pastor. Then he looked at both the husband and wife for a while. When he looked at and then talk, when their talk was going on, he understood that they wanted a girl child. Then immediately he said, "God is going to give you a girl child." The husband gave him a hand and said that my heart's desire that he set. Then he, they went to prepare food for this pastor into the house. Then he took out his pen and they went behind the door, the front door and wrote, you know, "A son is going to be born." Then he, they, they went to prepare food for this pastor into the house. Then he took out his pen and they went behind the door, the front door and wrote, you know, "A son is going to be born." Then he, they, they went to prepare food for this pastor into the house. Then he took out his pen and they went behind the door, the front door and wrote, you know, "A son is going to be born." They came and they gave him good food at the house and then they went off. When the, this particular sister, you know, delivered, it was a son that he delivered. Then he called the pastor. He told, the husband called the pastor and said, "Your prophecy has come to pass." "You come to my house." That he wanted to put him in trouble, that's why he called him. Then he said, "Never again prophesy," he said to the pastor. You said that it was a girl child, now it's a boy child, how is that? He gave a laughter and said. But I had a revelation of a boy. Because I didn't want you to be in sorrowful, so I said to them, "It is a girl child." If you have any doubt, go and look behind that door, front door. He was a man with good brains, you know, the pastor. Those who believe, just raise their hands and pray. If it was a girl child, he would have never showed them that particular writing on the back of the front door and he would have not said to them that, you know, so it would be either boy or girl, it would be fine. So he was a clever pastor, amen. The prophet who prophesies uses worldly things or manifest of his own brains is not the real prophet. Those who are a real prophet in this, never put anything that is worldly or that comes out of your own mind into prophecy. They say an amen again. Amen. Praise the Lord. Even if nobody says, the child will come out, right? Ninth month, you are saying, "Oh, come out, come out, come out." Even if anybody says without, you know, labor pains, no child is going to come out. Even if anybody, somebody prays, you know, you know, holding hands, you know, around the sepulchre and prays, "Let Jesus come out, let Jesus come out," even if nobody prays like that, Jesus is going. That I'm going to give you a revelation tonight, you know, publicly. There is nobody to pray for you, to cry for you, the Lord has a plan for you to bring you out. The Lord will bring you out surely, surely. Even if nobody, no prophet comes to your house and put their hands on your head. Even if an apostle doesn't come to your house to give you a message. The Lord has planned that he should come out, you are going to come out. The Lord has planned you to bring you out, no power can keep you inside. Everybody, those who believe, just tell to your next person that you will come out with belief, amen. If there is nobody next to you, there is an angel in the next chair next to you, tell him. Even if you think, "I will come out." Amen. Praise the Lord. That in that particular night, that incident was over. That I will tell you a revelation from that particular post. If there is a plan and purpose that is going on around you to not to bring you out, there is a plan and purpose in heaven to bring you out. There is a discussion in favor of you in heaven. There is a discussion which is going to bring you favor. On six day, on eight thirty, there is a discussion going on in heaven in favor of you. That is a discussion to bring you out. Believe, raise your hands and praise the Lord. Somebody, some people say, "There is nobody to talk for me." There is nobody to pray for me. There is nobody to understand my heart's pain. Everybody is going to say to you tonight that there is a discussion going on having to bring you out. Discussion that is going on is not that ordinary discussion, but it is happening in the heavenlies. Certain discussions are going on in hours and days together, but this discussion is going to bring benefit tonight, hallelujah. Praise the Lord and receive it. This is a discussion which will bring revelation and liberation in few hours' time. There is a favorable discussion for you in the heavenlies tonight. Those who believe, just clap your hands and praise the Lord. That receive this mighty power. There is a discussion going on in heavenlies. Your name has been called out in the heavenlies. There is a revelation that is a discussion which is going to bring you into heavenlies. There is a discussion about bringing you out, certain people have put doors, closed doors in front of you. There is a discussion which is going on, which will bring you out through the doors that has been closed in front of. That results of that discussion is manifest in this church. Those who believe, receive that in the name of. There is a discussion about bringing the kingdom of. The power of his kingdom. And manifest the kingdom of God. Amen. Amen, amen, amen. Raise your hands. Say, "Hallelujah." What's his name? Pria. Just stand up and say, "Amen." God is signed to a particular love, Pria means love in Malayalam. So God is going to have a particular love towards him. The deliverance is coming, this world is going to bring deliverance into you tonight. The whole church pray, please. So all of them receive that in the name of Jesus. Everybody say, everybody pray, please. This hour is the hour of liberation tonight. This message is not changed by the pastor. I, Dr. Abhil, did not change this message. The whole spirit has changed this message tonight. I'm going to implant on you that. Where there is a discussion about the kingdom of God. Where there is discussion of the kingdom of God, which is in favor. There is going to be a breakthrough. They have been a prayer in the afternoon, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the morning, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. They have been a prayer in the evening, they have been a prayer in the evening. The power of God is being manifested in certain situations where it is being closed, it is being opened in everybody's life here tonight, amen. Just clap your hands and praise the Lord. On the minute, you are ready. Hoorabala bhaba shandaradharadharadiyara. Lubarakalaba rakasada rakabashiandara. Lamasandarakasiandarala. Lotorolekesiandarakashiandare. Labasatharala kashiandara. Locorakabakaskiandaralamasi. Lotorolekishiibikiliakoriandara. Rakabakaskiandhobiyara. Lesidirihisiyata. Lekibikoliyara. Rakababashorabashiyandara. Lekibibishadhararakasi. Worship and thank. साधारण राबा शादारा राबा सुतला रे रे के बीबी
राबा बबा
लेखे रे रे के बीबी
सुतला कराबा
बीबी बीबी शक्का रगबल
रबा शंकला कराबा
रबा 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 ई रात्रि रिसुपर्नचरल अनोइंटिक दिन अगत चलिक्य
tonight there is a supernatural anointing
रिसुपर्नचरल पावर दिन अगत चलिक्य
supernatural power here tonight
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद नकत मोविया दुड़ेरिक
the whole spirit is moving here tonight
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद कायमात्य विद नकत वन्नुड़ेरिक
that transformation of the holy spirit
ओरे फैमिलीकी वेंड पाइकेज देवम तुरक्क
the body is going to open packages for each family
ओरे व्यक्तिकी वेंड पाइकेज देवम तुरक्क
interval for each interval the holy spirit
ओढरे व्यक्तिक नमुन बिले डोरगल ओपन आक
that door has been opened
मानुषण अनक्त देवम तुरक्क
that door has been opened because my man
मानुषण खूट्य विद मोगली देव शक्ति विभरिक्य
that has been closed to my man has been opened by the lord
ओराबा बबा बबा
amen
ओराबा
सादा राबा राबा राबा
लेते रे के दे रे के बीबी शादारा बबा लता रक्का बबा बबा
तुरक्का ताला बारा बस
लेबी बीबी शादारा लकेश आंधरा देवम नोडिंग नपर्यान ओपनिंग वेरिदा विश्वसिकितन
God is saying to me that there is a mighty opening
देवम नोडिंग नपर्यान ओपनिंग वेरिदा
mighty opening is coming
मानुषण तुरात्त विडुल नरकिवरंब
that what man cannot do god is doing right now
मानुषण द वीरल तुरात्त विडुल निकल नरिवरिदा
that there is a manifestation of the power of the holy spirit
मानुषण द बुद्ध तुरात्त विडुल निकल नरिवरिदा
mind of man cannot imagine what the holy spirit is doing
यानं पोलियुन देव शक्ति विभरिक्य
that knowledge is being broken but the power of god is being
एन्ने कर्ताविन नादु पर्यानुड़ेरिक
that is being being manifest here
यानं पोलियुन देव शक्ति विभरिक्य
knowledge is being broken
ओ यानं पोलियुन देव शक्ति विभरिक्य
the power of god which will break the knowledge
लाबा लारा लाबा शादारा लाबा रबा लिता रक्का बबा बबा शादारा लकेश बबा बबा लिते रे के बीबी शांतोरी लिगदर रक्का बशी आंधरा लेगदे बरका 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 बना हदुरीगमन हंदर लेगदर रक्का बशी आंधरा लाबा
amen
शंद लिसी दी दी कबाबा
ओराबा शकला कराबा सुरा बबा बबा
लता रक्का बला दारा कबशी आंधरा लकेश बशी आंधरा
शकला कराबा
चर्चनार्थ वेगर वायंगर मोव वरून
there is a move of god in this church tonight
चर्चनार्थ नकत परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद
the move of the holy spirit is there in this church tonight
चर्चनार्थ तेन्दो देवतिन द कायमात्य वेरिदा
there is a transformation there is an impartation by the holy spirit tonight
देवम नोडिंग नपर्यान चर्चनार्थ तेके देवराज्यम रगिवरिदा
the kingdom of god is coming into this church right now
चर्चनार्थ तेके मुरक्कलगल रिकायमात्य वेरंब
there is an impartation of miracles into this church right now
एश्वर्या कलरक्या अगत तरंगिया उयर फिन्न शक्ति
the power of the resurrection we came into the sepulchre of jesus
पुत्रने उयर फिक्या निभरिच्या शक्ति
the power of god which is manifest for the
ओ ई रात्रि विन अगत चलिक्य आरंभिक
that is going to move here tonight
अदिन खून रसिक्या नागरिक
those who want to enjoy that
अदिन खून संधोषिक्या नागरिक
those who want to be happy for that
ओ ई रात्रि एल्पिच वरिकल निवार
the holy spirit is saying that oh believe in him touch him
लाबा राबा दारा कबाबा शंदरा राबा बीबी
amen
रला कबशी लिबी कबारा कमन हदुरीगमन गदर रक्का बशी आंधरा लाबा लिबी कमन दारा कबशी आंधरा लिबी दारा कबला गदर रक्का बलगदर रक्का बशी आंधरा दारा
hallelujah
एन्ने कर्ताविन नेंदो ई चर्चनार्थ नकत नरकन
the lord is saying to me that something is happening in this church
बरनरी क्या बट्या तन्दो कर्ताविन चयाम्ब
the lord is going to do something which cannot be explained
इदिन अगत रिस्टेंड ओरि ओरि ओपनिंग वेरिदा
there is an instant opening here tonight
प्रदीश शिदम आईरि मोव
there is an indescribable move of god
प्रदीश शिदम आईरि मोव
those who cannot be manifest अदिच्या be understood by
अदिच्या कुडुमंगल काविशमान देवन
the lord is saying that certain households needs that tonight
अदिच्या वेत्तिलक काविशमान देव
there are the people who need that tonight
ओ अवरक वेंड इन्ने रात्रि आ डोर देव तुरक्क
that god is going to open the door tonight
निन्हे वीड देवराज्यम आई मर्ग
that your household your family is going to become the kingdom of god
निन्हे चर्चय देवराज्यम आई मर्ग
that is going to become the kingdom of god
ओ नी निक्यन नर्देवराज्यम आई मर्ग
that that is eternity that will be manifesting you
उयर पुवाहिच्या उन्नो नरकन रिसाग
that you are going to be going to be taking hold of the resurrection of jesus
ई रात्रि विन अगत चलिक्य
the power of god is being moved here tonight
अन्य भाषकली प्रार्थिक
those who have those who can pray in tongues please pray in tongues
hallelujah
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 रबा राबा
अमै अमै रुपास्ता कराबा सरा भाषकली प्रार्थिक
oh in the gifts of tongues those of gifts of tongues
अन्य भाषकली प्रार्थिक
worship the lord hallelujah
तंग स अन्य भाषकली प्रार्थिक
ओराबा शकला कराबा सरा बरा
अन्य भाषकली प्रार्थिक
those who have the gifts of tongues worship the lord
पुदुक्का पुदुक्का पुदुक्का
renewing renewing
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का renewing of the holy spirit
renewing of the holy spirit
ओ परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit tonight
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit
रिन्यूइंग ऑफ़ द होल्ड परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का रिन्यूइंग ऑफ़ द होल्ड रिक्का
ओ लाबा रबा शबा लाबा रबा
विश्वसिकितन अन्य भाषकली प्रार्थिक
those who believe worship in tongues
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का मरून
the holy spirit touches
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
renewing of the holy spirit
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का मरून
renewing of the holy spirit
renewing of the holy spirit परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का मरून
oh holy spirit is renewing you
एश्वर्या नामतिल विद स्वीकरित
holy spirit is renewing you
एश्वर्या नामतिल विद स्वीकरित एश्वर्या नामतिल विद स्वीकरित
receive it in the name of jesus
एश्वर्या नामतिल विद स्वीकरित
receive it in the name of jesus
परिशुद्ध आन्मा विद रिक्का
oh renewing of the holy spirit
आदा दारा दारा
रबा रबा शकला कराबा सरा
तुर्बावरंगल तुर्वियुन
oh there is a gift manifesting the church
तुर्बावरंगल आरंभिक
oh there is a gift of the holy spirit is coming now
ओ इसके द गिफ्ट द होल्ड स्पिन द कमिंग अल्टिवेच्या एरो पोर्शन ओपन आक
Over the Holy Spirit.
Ha, 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 ha. Da le re he se de re le. Ba 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 la ba. Say. Tulaba ba ba. Say. Sha ka la ka ra ba. Yes. Ba 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 la ba. Feel it Father. Feel it, feel it, feel it, feel it, feel it.
Feel it, feel it.
Mung madagikadakana, mungikadakana, mayinkadakana pradalangal. Adigawarathorabokana anointing.
Oh, anointing. For power of the Holy Spirit, amen. Amen, amen.
Se de re de re ki bi ki bi. Sata la ka basi antara alaba.
Amen.
Prabala pa ra ba. Prabasaka ra ba. Ba 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 la ba. Dabara ka basi.
La ba ra ba.
Nenakabimukumai deyuvanikiya.
God is with you face to face.
Enna da ninno da abimukumaita man samsaari.
The Lord is speaking to you face to face.
Nenna poradukana aru le.
There is nobody else to bring you out.
Nyanu nu dena poraduka.
Then I am there to bring you out.
Nyanu nu dena poraduka.
I am there to bring you out.
Inna ratri yandana poradukambo.
Then I am going to bring you out tonight.
Ii ratri ni porathu erina ratri.
Tonight, this is the night that you are going to come out.
Ii ratri ni porathu erina ratri.
This is the night that you are going to come out.
Ninnu poradukana i meetinga.
Oh, this is the night tonight that you are going to come out. Hallelujah.
Shabada ra.
Oh, Shabbat.
Jesus. Etthavarka manisilavano?
How many of you understand?
Amen.
Amen.
Ii ratri deyuvanikiyandi varadi cheraatriyana etthavarka bridda getano?
How many of you understand that this night is the Lord has separated this night for you? Amen.
Apostolika kaimatamii ratri chalakka deyuvukudukambo.
God is going to give a certain apostolic anointing, apostolic impartation to certain people tonight.
Manisharka ni oral budamakambo.
That you are becoming a miracle for men around you.
Nyanatina ni oral budamakambo.
Knowledge, you will be a miracle for the knowledge.
Ninnu deyuvan oral budamakambo.
You are going to become a miracle tonight.
Enki arayatila enki prosayiyamachanila.
Then I am not able to speak tonight.
Parashakartavinadu parinu inna ni oral budamaita porathu bogatullo.
The Lord is telling me that you will go out from this world to this place being a miracle.
Kalarakagati neeshu porathu anudara oral budamaidu bole.
Same way that the Lord came out of the sepulchre, the burial. Oh, that is a miracle.
Deyuvan ninnu janathina naduvi oral budamakambo.
That God is going to make you a miracle in midst of people.
Shasikinavadi ne swigiri.
Those who believe rest in Jesus' name.
Ra si ko ra ba la ka.
Oh, Shabbat.
De ke si ko li ya.
Oh, Shabbat. Ba ba ba. Sha ka la ka ra ba.
Be de re ke zibik.
Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka ra ba.
De ke ba la ke be di ka basi.
Oh, da la ba ra ba.
Le te ra ka ba 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 ba.
Sha ka la ba ba.
Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba.
La ba la ba ra ba.
Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba.
La ba ra ba.
Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba.
Oh, da la ka ra ba.
Re te le re ke be bi 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 shidiri.
Sha ka la ka ra ba.
Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba.
Ba 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 ba.
Se te re ke be ra ka basi antare.
La ba ra ba. Sha ka la ka da la ba. Oh, worship in tongues, worship in.
Fire of tongues.
Oh, fire of tongues.
Arasata ra ka ba ba.
Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka ra ba.
Se te re ke be 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 shidiri.
Ba 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 la ba. Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka da la ba.
Ra ba, la ka, da ra, ka ba, ra ka, da ra, ka ba ziyantara. Libi ziyantare li ya, ra hamazianteri. Lotu lotu lo koshi antare. Se de re ke be shi antare. Se me de re ke be kiya. Shandare le ka basi antare.
Amen.
Pongi la ba ra.
Come on, come on.
Ki bo ri, una ke bo ri. Re te le re ke be ziyantare.
Yes, oh, Shabbat.
Ra saan te le re. Abiru le bilo. Re be le ke be ri antara alaba.
Gloria.
Shaba shandara la ka basi antara. Lo ba ra ka ba li ya ra hamana. Oru prophetic anointing.
Prophetic anointing.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
There is an impartation of prophetic anointing. Impartation of prophetic.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
Prophetic anointing.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
Impartation of prophetic.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
Impartation of prophetic.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
Impartation of prophetic.
Oru prophetic anointing nalakambo.
Oh, impartation of prophetic. The Holy Spirit is saying.
Inna deyuvadu kaimarambho.
That is going to impart upon you.
Inna deyuvadu kaimarambho.
The Lord is going to impart upon you.
Inna deyuvadu kaimarambho.
The Lord is going to impart upon you.
Inna deyuvadu kaimarambho.
The Lord is going to impart upon you.
Yeah, it is a prophetic anointing.
Prophetic anointing.
Parishuddhaanma vi ratri.
The Holy Spirit is saying.
Ii ratri adu kaimarugaya.
Oh, the Lord is saying.
Vishusikana radmanu prarthikana.
Oh, just pray, worship in tongues.
Vishusikana radmanu yogatil prarthikana.
Those who believe, worship in tongues.
Abiru maunamai tirikirada.
No, don't sit without opening your mouth.
Abiru maunamai tirikirada.
Don't sit without opening.
Abiru maunamai tirikirada.
Don't sit quiet.
Abiru maunamai tirikirada.
Don't sit quiet.
Shaktamai danye phashigali prarthikana.
Raise your voice and praise the Lord.
Shaktamai danye phashigali prarthikana.
Worship the Lord in tongues.
Pratiaga muba.
Oh, Shabbat.
Oru pratiaga muba.
There is a move of the Holy Spirit tonight.
Oru pratiaga muba.
There is a move of the Holy Spirit tonight.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Move of the Holy Spirit tonight.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Move of the Holy Spirit.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Something move.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Something I put right.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Oh, it is a tremendous move.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Tremendous move of the Holy Spirit.
Oru pratiaga muba.
Move of the Holy Spirit.
Eyu ne kaimarugaya.
Oh, it is impartation tonight.
Eyu ne kaimarugaya.
It is impartation tonight.
Parishuddhaanma lu kaimarugaya.
It is imparting tonight.
Deyuvaswanda kaimarugaya.
Impartation tonight.
Aindha chale na mundagunno.
Oh, there is a movement tonight. There is a movement tonight.
Abada, abada, ba 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 ba.
Hallelujah.
Se de re ke de re ke be.
Oh, Shabbat.
Shama na dana ka basi antara alaba.
Sister Karen, sister Karen. Oh, sha ka la ka ra ba. Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka ra ba. Sutala ka ra ba. Amen. Ula ba 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 ba. Suk.
Kathavalu parinu?
The Lord is speaking to me.
Pravajika anointing ningalamele veliparambo.
The prophetic anointing is going to come upon you.
Shalasierne bija assistromatra nagu marine.
The last, Sister Karen, please come forward.
Oh, Shabbat. Shada ra ka basi. Slishtiki na rabishakavarka kaimarambho.
That you are going to have an anointing to create.
Ni prarthicha illa tu la vaivari.
That if you pray, then what is not there will come into creation.
Ni prarthicha varanda nila potu.
That those who dry land will be broken if you pray.
Mulakke atadu mulakke andodongo.
That those who are not there will become manifest.
Asatiangal satiamagandodongo.
That impossible becomes possible.
Oru fangara shakti nindadakata manifestiyambu.
The God's power is going to manifest you tonight today.
Yes, eshwin namatil.
Especially I think.
Ipraloyabirikyo.
There is going to be manifest tonight.
Vishwasatalena swigiri.
Receive it by the power, by belief.
Si li hor.
Oh, receive it. Amen.
Ada ra ka basi.
Oh, Shabbat.
Ra si di ri his. Ah. Ha, ha, ha. Ho de re ke be ke le ke de re he ziyanthe. Ka, ha, ha, ra si di ri ka basi. Di ka ba dal ba ra si. Dakba sandara.
Worship in tongues.
Dakba. Seal the Holy Spirit.
Oh, receive the Holy Spirit.
Oh, Jesus. Sa ra ba ra ka ba 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 ba. Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba. Shidi ri ka basi antara da da. Ramana hadera ka basi antara. Maninakata maritina naambo veridu bole.
In the same way that the little plant is coming out.
Nindaprathanannambo marupikina prathanambu.
There will be a new leaf in your prayers tonight.
Sandoshavali prarthichondrikanam kaichakar veda.
Happiness just to pray and worship the Lord.
Kaichakar veda.
You don't want any spectators tonight.
Deyuvan charcina vaidi and shushushakare edinu bigano.
The God is going to raise up ministers in this church.
Oru shushushan anointing yavari.
The ministry, the anointing of the ministry is being.
Prophetic anointing.
Prophetic anointing impartation.
Pravajiki mariporathu erina.
There is coming to be prophets tonight.
Pravajika mariporathu erino.
There is prophets tonight.
Pravajiki mariporathu erino.
Coming out of prophets and prophets.
Pravajika mariporathu erino.
Our prophets is coming out.
Pravajiki mariporathu erino.
Prophets are coming out.
Tiuda naambo padikida.
Oh, the fire of the tongue let it be manifest.
Anni naamugal padikida.
The fire of the tongue be imparted upon you.
Anni naamugal padikida.
Oh, Rabbi.
Anni naamugal padikida.
A fire of the tongue, fiery tongue.
De de de, sambavikano.
So it's happening tonight.
Andu ningalamele aragano.
Oh, it's coming to you tonight.
Inna ratri madalai pravajika bishikatil eka maruga.
Onwards you have a prophetic anointing.
Idivatnali maniku oru deyuvasamsaari kananava inigal marugaya.
That you will become the tongue that will speak the word of God twenty-four hours.
Deyuvanakal janathina kaimarunavari kaimarugaya.
That you will be, you will be giving out God's thinking to people.
Athira de platformileki holy spirit ningale edukano.
The Lord is going to bring you to that platform, the Holy Spirit is bringing you tonight.
Eswin namatil.
In the name of Jesus.
Se te re la ka si bi ka ba ra.
Oh, Shabbat.
Oru prophetic anointing.
Prophetic anointing.
Oru prophetic anointing. Oru prophetic anointing. Release. 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 Release, release. Release in the name of Jesus. Release agno. Release agno.
Being released. Being released.
Release agno.
Being released.
Oru prophetic.
Prophetic anointing.
Sign ulanointing.
Sign with signs.
Release agno.
Release.
Eswin namatil enesigiri.
Amen, in the name of Jesus.
Eswin namatil enesigiri.
Receive it in the name of Jesus.
Prophetic.
Prophetic anointing.
The real prophet.
Real prophet.
Ra ba sata ra ba si.
Oh, Shabbat.
La si ti ko.
Oh, ba talatala ba ra ba.
Si.
Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka.
Kaimarug.
Tulaba ba ba ra ba.
Oru real prophetic anointing.
Real prophetic anointing.
That was kaimarug.
The God is imparting upon you.
It's hard.
Oh.
Shada ra. Is seja kerevanna oru atma vi prarthichondrikanam.
Those who come here, just pray in tongues.
Ibadai kasari.
Pray in the spirit.
Deyuvajana atma vilprarthichondri.
Those who are sitting in the chairs, pray in the spirit.
Parishuddhaanma shushushakare varadi kiya.
The God is actually imparting the ministry upon this people.
Nindaprathanagali koodhalu pongi veridu spiritual, spiritual level nodu bandappatta prathanagala.
In your prayers, it is coming up, coming up again in relation to spiritual that is being, that you pray always.
Deyuvan biyoka mentu oru re degas prathanana nakunda.
There is a prayer in your heart that let the Lord use me, use me, that is your prayer.
Machupalidam parayatadu bole somdam vishiyatekaaluma puramai deyuvavishiyatinu koodhalu mogavila kodukunajila vaakkugal nindadarathil unda.
That there is words that are imparted upon your tongue, that comes out of your tongue, that gives more to the kingdom of God than your own personal things.
Zida, adinivendi deyuvan nindanaviyad thodugaya.
That tonight, the Lord is touching your tongue.
Ah, adinivendi deyuvan nindanaviyad thoduga.
Because of that, the Lord is touching your tongue.
Deyuvan nindanaviyad thoduga.
The Lord is touching your tongue.
Oh, far si di ri ka ba la ta da ba. Passo, no sapu.
Amen.
Yerisa. Shada ra ba.
Oh, Shabbat.
De de re ka bashi.
Oh, Shabbat.
Dakba la ka si.
Tulaba.
Move and overflow.
Overflowing.
Fill and overflow.
Fill and overflow.
Fill and overflow.
Amen.
Fill, fill, fill.
Amen.
Fill the power of Friswashi.
Yes, Lord.
Fill the power of Friswashi.
Amen.
Fill the power of Friswashi.
Amen.
Oh, Shabbat. Sha ba 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 la ba ra. Surba ba ba la ba. Sha ka ta la ba ra ba. Sha ka la ka da la ba ra ba. Sha ka ta la ba ra ba.
Oh.
Surba ra ba ra si ka ta la ba ra ba. Sha ka ta na da ra ba ra ba ra ba. Sudala ka ra ba. Sha ka la ka ra ba. Surba ba 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 ba. Ta na ba cha da. Ta na ba cha da. Waikiamba cha da.
You cannot see.
Odukamba cha da.
That you can not contain.
Bangara shakti kaimarug.
That the impartation of the mighty power of God.
Deyuvanu paraya.
The Lord is speaking to me.
Inna ratri akrabavana nindamele vinu gattu.
Tonight, that gift of the Holy Spirit is manifest in you.
Pravadichcha doorugal thodakana vana imaro.
That you will become, you will open doors through your prophecies.
Nindamele angadu re kaimatirangi kalidu.
There is an impartation upon you similar way.
Swigiri jolagata overayu.
The Lord is receiving, the Lord is saying, receive it.
Vishisikana sabha kainikiti blasiidu prarthicha.
Oh, those who believe, those who are in this church.
Shada ra ba.
Touch out their hands and pray for.
Ke be ri ka ba li ya.
Oh, Shabbat.
Ra da la ra ka ba da ra ka basi. Le de re ke be 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 be.
Stretch out your hands and pray.
Ke be 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 be. Ke be 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 shidi ri ke bi bi bi. Sa da ra ka ba 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 ba. Shanda ra da ra ka basi. Ra ta la ra ka ba 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 ba.
Oh, Shabbat.
Ra ba ka la ma ma landi. Ma ra ba ka la ma ma landi ra ba ba ka la ma ma landi. Oh, Shaddala ba. Mama ka la ba ba landi. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Mama ka la ba ba landi. Oh, Shaddala ba ba ka la ma ma landi. Mama ka la ba. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Mama ka la ba ba landi. Hallelujah.
Eswin namatil. In the name of Jesus.
Eswin namatil.
In the name of Jesus.
Shushushakare porathu erinu le etthavarka sandoshamundo.
The ministers are coming out, all of you are happy.
Shushushakare porathu erinu le prarthisandoshamundo.
Oh, those who are happy clap their hands and praise the Lord.
Eyu maraya shushushakare porathu erikida.
Oh, they're bringing up ministers.
Marani irikina ne porathu undariwa.
Those who have been hidden has been brought forward.
Olichirikina ne porathu undariwa.
Those who have been hidden has been brought forward.
Ubeyagamal ne porathu undi.
Those who have been useful is being brought forward.
Ipo la ina anointing chalikidu.
Oh, the anointing is going tonight.
Ipo inna ratri yavari kina shakti.
That the power that is being manifest tonight.
Yes, shivine marichavana yana ilidu.
The same power that resurrected Jesus.
Who are pick and yavari cha shakti.
The same power of resurrection.
Ra ba sandara.
Oh, Shabbat. Ra ba ra ba.
Ra te le re ke si antara.
Ra ba 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 la ba ra ba.
Ra ta la ra ba la ba.
Sha ka la ka ra ba.
Ra te le re ke si antara.
Ra ba ba ba. Sha ka la ka.
Shada ra ka basi antara.
In the name of Jesus.
Ah.
Hallelujah.
Ah.
Hallelujah.
Prophet, prophet, prophet.
Prophet, prophet.
Propheti porathu erino.
Oh, it's coming out of the prophet.
Yes, shivinamatil.
In the name of Jesus.
Ii ratri adu sambavikada.
And let it happen in the name of Jesus.
Ii ratri adu sambavikada.
Let it happen in the name of Jesus.
Deyuvan nindanakutatina naduvi.
Oh, God will bring you in midst of the people.
Dayrathoda noruthambo.
That you are going to be standing with courage.
Marja payunudu bole.
Just like the rain comes down.
Mudail wellamodu dundudu bole.
Just like the waters that flow through the river.
Deyuvajana nindava ilanodukiveru.
There will be a flow of the power of word of God from your mouth.
Minneka randhatalatil olabidu dalinu deyuvan kaimarug.
The Lord is going to impart upon you two particular manifestations.
Oru vajanabi shakatinda kaimachabu.
There is, there will be an anointing of the word of the Lord.
Deyuvan nindakka kaimarugaya.
The Lord is imparting upon you.
Ii ratri madalai oru extraordinary anointing lakimaro.
That you are going to be an extraordinary anointing from tonight.
Edanatindu olukunindhi adarati.
That the power of God, the flow of the word of the Lord will come into you.
Extraordinary prophetic anointing.
Prophetic anointing will come into you.
Idi andam nindathodambo.
The two manifestations are coming up.
But the power of Jesus.
By the power of Jesus.
Oh, Shaddala ba la ka ra ba.
Oh, Shabbat.
Le te re ke be.
Oh, Shabbat.
Eswin namatil fillagada.
In the name of Jesus, let it be filled.
Eswin namatil fillagada.
In the name of Jesus, be filled.
Oh, Shabbat.
Oh, Shabbat. Sha ka la ka.
Ivarikana nairanake paran.
Oh, just stand in the line in front.
Nade karangortu badijada.
Just hold your hands tonight, hold your hands together.
Amen. Ella nu oru bishu, vili chavu oru bishu karangortu.
Everybody stands in a line, holding hands, please.
Oh, Shaddala ba.
Oh, Shabbat.
Sha ka la ka. Batara ka basi.
Amen.
Debi ka ba da ka basi.
Oh, Sha ka la.
Mudduvanu prosayyamachanila, niki sangarunu ilaa.
That I am not unhappy because I cannot preach.
Deyuvanu parinu nindakooda pua.
That I walk with what the Lord tells me.
Idi charcina bangara breakthroughundaga.
There will be a breakthrough for the church, this meeting.
Charcindagat bangara pravajika edinu.
There will be a mighty rising up of prophets in this church.
Alpasalpam velipadu kandavara.
It's not just a little bit of revelation that comes to you.
Alpasalpam pravajikina varala.
It's not about a little bit of prophecies that come out of you.
Asathara na prophet.
Oh, special anointing, special anointing.
Stalem.
Prophet.
Specify jayinu.
Specific will come out of your mouth.
Stalem, naamam, vekthikalda.
Place, name.
Akka specify jayinu chalidu.
Oh, they'll come out of your mouth.
Minneka thirinakambo.
That people are going to be raised up tonight.
Oru vekthiida shariida thikadakana roganale vivejikina.
That you will be able to understand what, there is a disease in a particular person, you will be able to decipher it.
Ii anointing yavaramela arangambo.
That anointing will come upon you tonight.
Sabamurruvane prarthijada.
That everybody in this church praying.
Deyuvanu dabisikatana kodi edinu tivanada.
That you are the anointed of the Holy Spirit.
Kasariel irikina varaninu karangala korthu badijada.
Those who are sitting in the chairs, please hold your hands across.